All right, a little after 5:30, someone called a meeting to order if everybody could rise. Do I mean the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you, everybody who is here in attendance for our school board meeting. Thank you to those who are online and viewing as well. We appreciate you. Welcome back, everyone, back into swinging things. So first, we will start with a special recognition. So Dr. Pierce will lead us through school board recognition month.
Just one moment. Okay, well, good evening, everyone. It's January, so that means it is school board recognition month in our state. So the board has some goodies in front of you, a certificate, a little goody bag, some crumble cookies. So we're loading you up with some carbs. And we had one of our schools, and I think this is a testament to the fact that our schools so much appreciate seeing board members, visits, and your level of engagement. We had one of our schools, Washington Elementary, drop off this super cute poster this afternoon that says, "Thank you for the role you play." And those cinnamon rolls came along with the poster. So it's been signed by students, and so wanted to share that with you as well. And we'll keep that right here throughout the meeting. But we sincerely do, and all of our schools appreciate, the role that the board plays here in our district. And so we like to make sure we recognize you, give you that recognition you deserve every January. And I'm going to read the governor's proclamation. This is the first proclamation from Governor Bob Ferguson that I've ever got to read. So I'm going to read that for you now. It says, "Whereas the mission of Washington's public school system is to ensure that all students achieve at high levels and possess the knowledge and skills to be responsible members of a democratic society and enjoy productive and satisfying lives. And whereas Washington's 295 locally elected school boards of directors and nine elected educational service direct, educational service district boards are the core of the public education governance system in our state. And whereas the districts and regions they lead serve more than 1.1 million students, have a combined annual budget of over $20 billion, and employ approximately 125,345 people. And whereas school directors play a crucial role in promoting student learning and achievement by creating a vision, establishing policies and budgets, and setting clear standards of accountability for all involved. And whereas school directors are directly accountable to the residents in their districts and regions, serving as a vital link between members of the community and their schools. And whereas school directors and ESDs provide a passionate voice of advocacy for public schools and the welfare of schoolchildren. And whereas it is appropriate to recognize school board directors as outstanding public servants and champions for public education. Now therefore, I, Bob Ferguson, Governor of the State of Washington, do hereby proclaim January 2025 as School Board Recognition Month in Washington. And I encourage all people in our state to join me in this special observance." And that is signed by Governor Bob Ferguson. So thank you, board members, for all that you do for our students here in KST. And I hope everybody can join me in giving them a round of applause.
Thank you. Next up, we are going into fall sports and activities recognition, Matt Scott.
All right, good evening. Excuse me. So we do have our fall sports and clubs recognition tonight. And I just wanted to point out that we had many, many great seasons in our fall sports season, all teams across our district, and we had some great club activities as well. For this particular, and what we try to do is we try to recognize those through our, through our Facebook page and through the website and those types of things. We reserve this recognition, though, with the board for those that are truly have had an outstanding season. We recognize the top one or two team places in state. We also recognize the top one, two, or three individuals in state, as well as some other types of competition that don't necessarily align with that. So tonight, we have two of our high schools here to recognize their students. We're going to start with Southridge High School and Rick Wells. Rick, come on up and introduce your team.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us here today. Very proud to be the athletics and activities director at Southridge High School with all of our great kids and all of our great coaches and advisors. One of our teams that kind of competes throughout the whole year is our SolarFlare Gaming Club. And they compete all around the state. They actually compete nationwide and do some amazing things. But, and they even have their own cool gaming shirts. So that's, it's one of the coolest things that you got to earn that deal. So I wanted to introduce our coach, Jason Giancola, who I believe also has some of his students here for our Splatoon. Splatoon is the game that they competed at State very well, and I'll let him talk about that. Thanks, Jason.
Hello, I'm Jason Giancola. Like I said, I'm the coach at Southridge High School for our esports program, SolarFlare Gaming Club. We do have one member here today. A couple of the other members are at home studying for finals. So Ezekiel played for us for Splatoon. Splatoon is a third-person paint-the-block type game against a competitive team. This season, we finished third in our division, but then at State finished second. And it was a really kind of a back-and-forth match in between really top three teams. Ray Stevens, Central Kitsap. And it seemed like we were the trifecta. We could beat one of those teams, the other team would beat the other, and then they could beat us. So it just kind of ended up with, we finished second overall. And we faced Central Kitsap, which was kind of our thorn in our side the whole season. And it was awesome watching them a handful of games. If you'd like, I could send you guys the YouTube video of our live state feed that they competed in. And then a couple of other things that I did want to mention. The amount of kids that we have going on to universities to play and compete in esports. This past year, we graduated four kids who are now playing, I can't say kids now, they're adults. They're now playing over at CBC on athletic scholarships, receiving 45% of their tuition or, or greater, at least with esports. And then this year already, we have four more, three more signed with one potential. And then a former, former student of mine went to CBC, played under Joel Harvey, and is now up at University of Idaho for their esports program on a full ride athletic scholarship. So we're going places with it.
Yes, please send them to the other.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Shake hands.
Yeah, we didn't coach.
What grade are you in?
All right, okay, so congratulations. So awesome, congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we have our principal from Kennewick High School. Ron King is going to come up and introduce a couple of his students who had some great outcomes this fall as well.
All right, well, thanks for having us tonight. And we do appreciate all the opportunities that the school district provides to our, our students. We're also grateful that we have awesome staff that are willing to spend the extra time to work with kids with all these activities that are available to them. So I've got two staff members and students to recognize here that have you guys recognized. T.L. Tippett, who is our awesome teacher and swim coach. And she's here with Eliana, who is a, one of our swimmers. So come on up. I'll let them talk first, and then I'll introduce the next one after that.
Good evening, and thank you guys for having us. So this is Eliana. This is her third year on swim team. She came out as a freshman with no competitive experience, but dedicated herself to competing hard through both season and through any available summer practice she should, could have. And this summer, or this year, she had quite the season. So at districts, she took first in the 53 and 50 back for adaptive swims. So if you take first in any competition, then you automatically allocate onto state. And so she went onto state, and she took second in both of those events at the state level and set personal bests under all the pressures that state provides. And also, it should be noted, she is the first female adaptive swim from the ACCC to go on to the state level from any team from the OCC. So it's quite an accomplishment.
She's got more opportunities ahead of her, so we're excited for her, too. Very proud. We also have Josh Urquies here with Jeffrey Noah. And this is more on the academic side. Josh is our computer science teacher and also has started our robotics club that's been very successful. But Jeffrey, who's a full IB candidate, and he's got finals to worry about tonight, so hopefully he'll be done soon, won the Congressional Apple Award, which is a pretty big deal. And Congress and Newhouse is involved with that. So I'll let him explain a little bit more, and it's a pretty cool thing for Kennewick High and KST.
Thanks for having us. Introduce you to Jeff Noah here. You'll hear that name again, I'm pretty sure of it. Every now and then, a student comes along and challenges you. This young man has done that. Three years of my computer science program, and every year, he seems to blow me away with his accomplishments. Not only is he a captain of our robotics team that we took to Houston for the world championships last year. He's excelled in every one of my courses to the point that we're actually pulling an extracurricular to keep him busy. But this last year, we decided to take on Apple curriculum to learn how to program SWIFT development for apps. It's been our big challenge in class, working with Apple engineers. Jeff took it on, said, "I'm going to write an app for the Congressional App Challenge next year." Got tied up in robotics, and we finally sat down and did it. Not only did he write an app that, fully functional, blew away Dan Newhouse. It wasn't just a program. He actually decided to solve an issue in society where he created a social crowdsourcing app, which allowed farmers and local gardeners and any participants in the community to report pests. So allowing this app to now aggregate reporting of pests and help reduce the level of pesticides that are needed to be applied to our farms, help farmers appropriate the proper type of pesticides to apply, helping our community, our agriculture supply, and our river systems, which is what blew away Dan Newhouse. So pretty exceptionally young man. Introduce you guys to tonight.
That concludes our fall activities and sports recognition.
Awesome. Well, we'll, we'll excuse the kids that are busy with finals. All right, we will move ahead with our agenda. We will go to communication from parents, staff, and district residents. Well, I can't find it. "We ask that you model good behavior." Oh, there we go, okay. We've been reading it for about three years, so hopefully everybody gets the gist. But the Kennewick School District Board of Directors appreciates hearing from the community at regular board business meetings. The Board of Directors provides an opportunity for communication from parents, staff, and district residents. This time is reserved during the working meeting for the board to listen to comments, input, and information. The board does not respond to comments provided as the goal is to listen and learn. Please know that the board's silence is neutral. It's neither a signal of agreement nor disagreement with the speaker's remarks. As appropriate, the board will ask the superintendent and her staff to look into any issues raised. Finally, please remember that your words have impact, and you, not the school district, are responsible for those words. We caution speakers that it's possible that your statements could violate the rights of others under various laws, including laws protecting privacy and laws prohibiting defamation. If you're unsure of the legal effect of your remarks, you should seek independent legal counsel. Guidelines for addressing the board, signed in. We'll call your names to the podium. You'll have two minutes to address the board. Stoplight on the screen will let you know when to begin, when you have a minute remaining, and when your time has ended. All right, first up, we have Dottie Stevens.
Thank you. Dottie Stevens, I come to you this evening as a Kennewick School District Partner. I recently attended your study session. I was very pleased to hear that you're interested in student leadership recognition. So am I. So some things going on that you might know, that you might tap into. I know that Columbia Center Rotary, Amanda Heap, and I think Tracy probably knows her. They do student of the month recognition. They also do scholars, but their scholars are also leadership and service-bound. And so there is something that's already going on. I've observed it, and it's done in an excellent way, and you might tap into it. I myself am a member of Pasco Kennewick Rotary, 33 years, and I am the Youth Services Director. And we do recognition also, scholarship leadership services to the community. And we include parents, we include staff, and we are serving, amongst other things, TRITech. We have students at Delta and at Kennewick High School. So I'm very excited to hear for more recognition of students. It's what I'm about to. Thank you.
Thank you, Dottie. Appreciate it. That's it, unless we have anybody online. Not nobody online, all right. Moving along, we'll move to the consent items. Take a motion to approve consent items.
I move we approve the consent items as presented.
All right, we have a motion. We will go Patty with the roll call vote, please.
Mr. Connors?
Yes.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Gladhill?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
And Mr. Galbraith?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving along. Next up is communication follow-up. We'll start with Dr. Pierce. If you have any.
I do not have anything for communication follow-up.
Perfect. We will move right along then into superintendent and board member reports. We will start with Annie.
Okay, so we had our superintendent student advisory council meeting back on January 8th, and we discussed the superintendent search and what kind of characteristics we would want in our new superintendent and different questions we could ask at the interviews on the 4th, 5th, and the 6th. And that was it. And then we're going to follow back up with that on the 4th, 5th, and 6th when we meet here. I also had the opportunity to visit Legacy last Monday, and it was wonderful. Everyone there was so lovely, and it was just so amazing to see all the things that they're doing there to best help their students succeed.
Great. You guys feel good working on those questions? Now you guys are going to have a big, big meeting here, so.
Yeah.
Don't go easy on them.
Okay.
All right, we will move to Dr. Pierce.
Okay, well, in case people didn't see the article in the Tri-City Herald, I wanted to share that we're really proud that Southridge High School teacher, biology teacher, Dr. Ramadhava Gupta, has earned national recognition by being awarded the Presidential Award for Excellence in Mathematics and Science Teaching. So it is a very big deal. As I shared with the Herald, she is a highly dedicated and professional educator, and she's worked really hard to earn this national distinction. I've had the person, the privilege of visiting her classroom numerous times at her invitation, co-taught a lesson with her, as did Ms. Gladhill. She is, she is impressive. Her content knowledge, her dedication to her students and improving STEM education. We're really proud to call her one of our own here in Kennewick. And we just extend our heartfelt congratulations to her. Like I said, this is a really big deal, national award, and comes with a $10,000 award. I'm not sure. I'll keep you posted if there's, you know, ceremonies or anything, presentations. I know she had to go to India unexpectedly, is my understanding. Or we would have invited her to be here tonight, but we will certainly invite her to a future meeting, so we can share congratulations with her. I also wanted to take just a moment tonight to publicly recognize and thank Ron Cohn for his 23 years of service to our district as the Executive Director of Information Technology. And as the board and our staff know, Ron retired unexpectedly at the end of the year due to his wife's health. But he spent 23-plus years here in our district helping to really shepherd our technology department into a first-rate operation. You know, there's so many things. I'll highlight just a couple, including the transition to one-to-one student computing since I've been here. Also, just the improvements that have been made to network safety and our internet stability, to name a few. He's built really, really strong systems for end-user support and has really worked to develop the leadership capacity of the IT team. So he leaves behind a legacy of excellent leadership and a strong department to carry on to the benefit of our students and staff. So we just thank him for his service to our district. Lastly, just a couple other items of interest. I've talked a lot today because I had the pleasure of presenting at the Tri-City Chamber Luncheon with my superintendent colleagues from Pasco and Richland. We were asked to focus on the work we're doing to prepare students for the workforce, incorporate career and technical education into the curriculum, and connect students with employers and secure resources needed to build for the future. So I was able to highlight our learner profile, shared with them the amazing shake, shared with them our High School and Beyond Plan efforts with school links, various CTE programs, Skill Center. So it was fun to just be able to highlight all of the efforts that our staff are taking here in the districts. And then right after that, along with many, many of my colleagues from across the state, I provided remote testimony to the Senate Committee on Early Learning and K-12 Education in support of key special education, maintenance supplies, and operating costs through MSOC and transportation bills. So it was a long afternoon of talking, but good busy day.
Thank you, Dr. Pierce. Next up, Mike.
Really nothing to report, but I would like to thank the TRITech culinary team for making us dinner tonight. It was absolutely delicious, and I apologize for not coming over and saying hi to everyone. But again, it was really wonderful, so thank you very much for that.
Great. Thanks, Mike. Dr. Miller?
Yeah, so not a whole lot to say. We were here last week. So again, thanks as well for the wonderful dinner. It was, it was unexpected and delightful. The other thing, wanted to encourage all of our high school students who are in the midst of their finals. They're, you know, we, we, we as a school board understand it's, it's a stressful time for you, but this is important that you're focusing on your academics and really focusing on your studies, and we hope that you do well during those finals. Final thing is, is I've been working on looking into and, and looking at some of the different types of banquet dinners, academic, and other types of awards dinners they do in other districts. Kind of looking at different opportunities that we'd have as a district to maybe highlight some of the, the academic excellences going on. Been putting together a proposal for that, so. And I've shared a couple thoughts with some of the different board members. And over the next couple of weeks, we'll hammer that out further.
Great. Thank you. Brittany?
Hey. So with the superintendent search and with the legislative session starting, I'm shifting my focus from school visits right now to the superintendent search and to the legislature. There's a lot going on. So started off a week and a half ago with Tracy at the WASDA training. I got some good information about what to expect from the legislature this session. Mainly, just what they are asking us to do is just remember that every conversation we have with any key influencer, as far as our representatives or our senators go, is to just reiterate as often as possible the three objectives that we have, which is special education funding, MSOC funding, and transportation funding. So just those three things on repeat, that's what we're focusing on for this session. Have gotten started on paying attention to some of the legislation that is coming. So attended a Zoom session last week from WASDA, just kind of high-level surface overview for what was happening this week. And because of that, I signed on Monday to listen to the Early Learning and K-12 Education Committee meeting. They were specifically, that session, they were talking about four bills. That session, I was only able to listen to two. But this was for Senate Bill 5181 and Senate Bill 5180. These ones, the first one is for amending the Parent Bill of Rights, which was passed as an initiative last session. That was Senate, that was Initiative 2081, I think if I have that correct. And they're making some amendments to it to bring it into compliance with some of the existing law. But there are some changes in it that, just knowing our community and the research that we're doing right now on private school enrollment and homeschool enrollment, we have some preliminary data back from our third-party researcher. So I personally, I didn't do it as a representative of the board because I hadn't talked with you yet to get the okay to do it officially as a member of this, of the Kennewick School Board. But personally, just submitted testimony that, that I'm on board with many of the amendments, but there are a few amendments that I think could exacerbate some of the distrust we've got going on. So submitted that testimony. There is another hearing for that tomorrow morning at 10:30, if anyone's interested in that particular issue. And then I'm glad to hear that you were involved in the MSOC and special education, because that was something else that was on my list, but couldn't do them both. So, thank you. Teamwork. Yeah, that's, that's what I've been working on.
So thank you, Brittany. Micah, you're up.
Yeah, so, um, this actually happened a little bit ago. We haven't had a chance to talk about it. We had a legislative rep meeting where we, it was really cool because we got to meet with all the legislative reps from our area, the people who represent us in Olympia, who are going to be. And they've got to talk to Gabe, Tracy, and I about, just about how we feel about certain laws and stuff. And a couple takeaways. My, my biggest takeaway was kind of, I, I was really happy to hear that I felt like they, they felt like our district was the best-run district in the Tri-Cities. Our budget's doing great. I think we have great admin. I think, I think everything is doing, is really, really in line. And I think they really strongly felt that. And so that, that made me, made me, made me proud to hear. And it was a really good conversation. We got a, we got to talk to them about the, the issues that we believe are important for them to bring back to their legislative session, so that was nice. We also had a KST game, had a KST budget meeting with, with Tom, and Vic came in and just to really make sure that we really understand the budget really, really well as we go into this next little bit, as, as Vic is, is just about completely phased out. And so we want to make sure that we have a good handle on that. So that was a really good informative meeting, and, and again, that gave us a lot of confidence. As, as Brittany mentioned, and we've been heavy in the superintendent packets, and, and I feel really strongly that we're going to, we're going to get somebody, somebody very, very good. So obviously, more to come of that, and I hope, I hope the community does show up for, for the, the opportunities they have to, to meet the candidates and to provide feedback. So we're really looking forward to that. And then I had a visit, and I, I'm kicking myself because I, I had it sitting right by my, my keys, and then I was dealing with it. My daughter is on something, and I walk out of the room, I forgot it. But I had a visit with Christina Cortez, Piper Burress, and Laura Hamilton at Amistad. Christina, she's a tier-two teacher, and she gave me a really nice picture that she put together, framed of several students and their stories. And I was going to have it here. I was going to keep it here, and I forgot it because I'm an idiot. And, but I will try to bring it next time. Anyway, I just want to say a very special thank you for them, all the work they do. They shared with me some of the, the challenges and some of the, the good things about everything that's happening with their, with their program. So helped me understand a little better, have some, some. have some, some things I can bring, bring forth to the board to potentially help. But I just want to give a special thank out, thank you to them, especially Christina Cortez, who made me that nice. Thanks. She definitely put some time into it. And that was very nice of her.
Thank you, Micah. So I snuck out to some schools. So I went to Southgate, Cascade, Kamaiakin and Park. Had good visits there. Talking about, one of the things I think I constantly talk about is just behavior and discipline. So it's always good to get the admin's perspective in school, how things are working and where maybe we can help. They caught me at Park right when I walked in. They said, can our leadership group interview you real quick? So they put together a few questions, came in, did a little film, and they, they sent it out to the schools. So that was, that was fun to do. You're just saying that. Let's see, besides that, again, the superintendent's search, obviously, is taking a lot of time. I think we all up here want to make sure that we fill these big shoes that Tracy is going to be leaving here at the end of the year. So we're putting a lot of time and effort into that. Following the legislation, so again, that's, that's a big, a big deal. Similar to Brittany, probably different reasons. But I personally did some, some recording my cons for some legislation. And then I also applied or did the application to be a part of the WASDA Interscholastic Activities Committee. So we have a vacant chair or a vacant opening for our District 11. And that committee annually reviews and makes recommendations on proposals submitted to WIA. So it's not a large task, but one I feel pretty passionate about joining. So we'll see if that happens. And that is all I have. So we will move ahead to reports and discussions. First one up is our Annual Nutrition Services Report. Christine Benson will be presenting.
She says she has a big surprise at the end.
Great charts.
We're really excited.
Good evening. I'm Christine Benson. I'm the Nutrition Services Director. And this is our annual report of our department for the 2324 school year. Is that right? Yeah, so we're in the 2425. In partnership with Sodexo Nutrition Services provides meal at all 17 elementary schools, five middle schools, three high schools, three alternative schools, and ECAP. We are housed in the warehouse on Kellogg Avenue. We have an amazing team that makes sure all of our schools have the support they need to produce nutritious and delicious food for our students. We work very hard to align with the district's strategic goals, and we are very proud of the work we do. Our management team is here, along with our Sodexo District Manager. Pictured here, we have Brandy Barajas. She is a field supervisor. Audrey Brandom, field supervisor. Corey McThadden is our Assistant Director. Sabrina Wood is one of our admin assistants. She deals with subs and payroll. Lisa Garrison, she is all things food, ordering, distribution. Mandy Kinsey is our application processor. She does verifications and our wins claims. Tonight, our wonderful Tri-Tech culinary team prepared dinner for you. Chef Luis Alvarez, he's not here, but he is the chef instructor over at Tri-Tech. Chef Kate McKellar, she is our catering supervisor. She supports nutrition services as well as Tri-Tech. And Chef Aubrey Colmas is the culinary assistant. The Tri-Tech Culinary Program is American Culinary Federation certified as well as SurfSafe certified. Tri-Tech Culinary prepares students for careers in the hospitality industry. Student feedback is a crucial part of our business. It provides insight into what students want and how we can improve their overall meal experience. Every October, we are invited to participate in the Superintendent Student Advisory Council. From our discussion with the student representatives, we find out what they like about our program and what they would like to see us improve on. At our last meeting, we learned that students like convenience, second-chance breakfast, and our friendly staff. They're looking for more variety of fruits and vegetables and easy access to menus and nutrition facts. We address their needs by offering more seasonal items, such as plums, nectarines, peaches, watermelon, et cetera. And this year, we implemented a program called Nutrislice, which gives students access to the most up-to-date menus and nutritional facts for the food that we serve. At the middle school, we do a captured survey with a select group of students. Students take pictures of their lunch experience. The group of students share their pictures with managers and the kitchen staff, and they develop a plan to address their concern. So we have here an example of a student that took pictures of his experience. And so one of the things that this student wanted us to work on was this high-quality sandwich. So as we look at this, we're like, okay, what's wrong here? Well, the chicken patty is soggy and not crispy. Well, why is that? Well, when our staff is preparing the chicken sandwich, that we will keep them in hotel pans. Well, the staff member was putting a lid on it. So create steam, which then softens the chicken patty, and it's not so crispy. So it's just as simple, just take the lid off and don't do that. So these are the, you know, the feedback that we get that we try to, you know, improve. We hold a Vote and Be Heard Elementary Student Survey in November. We serve over 6,000 elementary students, but for this particular survey, we only had 500 students respond. Even though the data was mostly positive, it wasn't a good sample of our overall performance. We didn't capture responses from our higher participating schools. We are working on the best way to reach our students to be able to get the data that we need to understand, you know, what their needs are. Our department tracks average daily participation and uses the data to make decisions on how to increase participation. So here is an example of our breakfast participation in May of 2024. It shows that at Kamaiakin and Desert Hills, we have a lower participation for breakfast. So we look at that information and we ask ourselves, well, why is that compared to the other schools? Well, at those schools, we only offer breakfast before the bell. We know that, for at least a high school student, most of them are not going to get up early to go get breakfast. So, you know, we have to be able to reach those students in a different way. We offer second-chance breakfast at the other secondary schools, and it's very popular. So this school year, we implemented second-chance breakfast at Desert Hills and Kamaiakin. Now, here is the data from October of 2025. So Kamaiakin went from 5% participation of breakfast to 14% participation. Desert Hills went from 18 to 56%. So it's a very popular program, and we implemented it here, and it continues to be very popular. So last year, we also surveyed students and parents at MCP because they were not participating in the National School Lunch and Breakfast Program. We implemented it. We have now 5% participation this year compared to zero. Our department is committed to safety. Corey, our Assistant Director and I are both SurfSafe trainers. Every kitchen manager at our school, they're SurfSafe certified. Every kitchen team participates in weekly safety huddles. We have a safety committee that Audrey leads, and she goes around every month to a school, and they discuss safety concerns. All of our managers do two safety walks per week. And it is our goal of our department to receive a perfect score from the Health Department. And we're very happy to say that this year, 90% of our schools got perfect scores on their Health Department reviews. Sodexo requires that all of their units have a third-party safety audit. So this is a safety audit that's even much more intensive than when Ben Franklin comes and reviews us. They selected three schools last year, Cascade, Amistad, and Edison. They cover food safety as well as work safety. And I'm proud to say that all of our schools that they reviewed, received double gold scores. So our department receives federal and state reimbursement for the meals that we serve. We work very hard to manage our costs, labor, food, directs, and indirect costs, with the goal of breaking even. This is a five-year chart to show our revenue expenses. And we continue to, you know, trend well as far as making sure that our expenses do not exceed our revenue. So student feedback, opportunity assessment, innovation, and safety drive our business. As a result, we continue to grow student participation in our program. And I'm very happy to say that last year, we served over 3.4 million meals to the students in Kennewick. We also serve students in the summertime at all of the summer school sites. Last year, there was a reduced number of summer school sites. So we didn't serve as many meals. But I know that, you know, there wasn't as much funding to offer summer school at all of the sites, but we did, we did feed those students. And we also fed students from ECAP, not ECAP, YCA, that were running summer, summer camps. Future Chef is a cooking competition that we hold every year for fourth and fifth-grade students. The purpose of the cooking competition is to encourage the love of cooking as well as the importance of eating healthy nutritious food. Students are paired with a Tri-Tech culinary student mentor to help them prepare their dish. This gives contestants an insight into the culinary program at Tri-Tech. This year's theme is your favorite main dish. Last year, Liam Anderson from Sunset View Elementary won the cooking competition. His recipe was little shrimp pie steaks and oodles of noodles. We have an amazing, we have a lot of amazing young chefs in Kennewick. Yeah. And it's great to see what they can prepare. So if you are interested, on March 7th is our Future Chef competition. We are looking for judges. So please reach out to me if you are interested in judging.
Thank you, Christine.
Hey. Any questions?
Yeah, I got a couple.
Okay.
Well, you know that I'm interested. And it looks like bacon that one of those guys make up there. Okay, so question about the student feedback. By the way, 3.4 million, that was the grand.
That was, yeah, that's a big number.
Yeah, yeah, it was. The student feedback, so how, the high schools' feedback, how was that done?
So there are all of the student representatives from all of the high schools that are part of Tracy's student focus group. They meet here once a month. So we're invited, and then we have a bunch of questions that we ask, and they go around and they answer the questions about, you know, what do you like, what do you don't like, what are your favorite items, what do you want to see, what do we need to work on? So we have just a variety of questions that, that we ask them.
Well, I like the fact that I'm actually surprised, but I'm really happy to hear that they want a more variety of fruit and vegetables.
Oh, yes.
That's good. I wonder if we could do something about maybe expanding that, that, you know, that, that feedback. I also noticed that Legacy, when you're talking about that, as far as the meals, that Legacy was pretty low, unless you specifically mentioned Desert Hills and Kamaiakin.
So our alternative schools, Legacy, Phoenix, you know, because of their schedule, a lot of times, that's part of our biggest, you know, our biggest challenge as far as reaching them. We did, was it last year or two years ago, Corey? We actually had a focus group with their student government group at Legacy to find out specifically, you know, what they wanted. Because part of our problem is we don't have a kitchen. And so our food is prepared. This year, it's prepared at Shenuk, and then it has to be transported. So, you know, some of the things that they have at Kennewick High, we can't do at Legacy because we have to transport it. So, you know, we try to, you know, find out what their favorite things are, and if it can transport and still look tasty, then yes, we will do that.
Any other questions?
Not really a question, but just a comment. I happened to be visiting MCP a few weeks back during their lunch hour. And.
That, that was a big surprise because, you know, we had, we had asked them several times, you know, are you interested? They're like, no, 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 no. And so we said, we're going to try it this year. And I reached out to Richland to find out, you know, how many, how many kids are you feeding, you know, for your alternative school? And they're like, about 35. And we serve over 100 kids at MCP. Yeah, it's a very, it's very popular there. So we prepared the food at Forza and then moved it over.
Yeah, it was an impressive operation.
Well, thank you.
Yeah.
I have one.
One more, one more question.
Waste. Do we have a lot of waste? What do we do with it? How does that work? I mean, what's?
So we are required by law to keep production records. So we have to put, how much we produce and how much, you know, gets wasted. So, you know, we adjust our production based on participation. You know, there are rules that say kids have to take a half a cup of fruit and vegetable. They don't want it, but in order to receive reimbursement, we have to do it. So we have share baskets. So if you, you have to take the apple, put it into a share basket rather than throw it in the trash. At Kennewick High and Kamaiakin, we have this program called Lean Path. So what our cooks do is, at the end of service, anything that's left over in the kitchen, they're supposed to weigh so that we know how much, again, is left over. And it tracks it, and then again, they address their production based on the participation and the waste.
Okay. No, that's great to hear.
Yeah.
We have gardens everywhere. Just kidding.
And we're working on garden stuff.
That was internal.
Yeah, I know.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
All right, we will move along to our next and final report and discussion for the evening, Annual Staff Safety Report. Molly is up. How are you?
I'm doing well. How are you?
Doing good.
Good.
Thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. And this is my annual staff safety report for the 2024 calendar year. The topic overview is that all of our staff members are safe, respected, and valued professionals. And this is really to hold our self-insured LNI account, the system accountability. My goal indicators and targets that I present on primarily is the number of labor and industry claims filed each year is less than 3% of the total number of employees, and that the percentage of our time loss LNI claims are less than 10% of those claims each year. My focus is on required staff safety-related training and claims and loss data. For our required trainings, all employees are required to take safety training through a safety platform called Vector or Safe Schools. And what we're able to do is we're able to create training profiles based on what they do for us. So that way, we don't have the cooks and the custodians, coaches, and pairs all taking the exact same modules because they all have different hazards in their jobs. So we want to be able to tailor their safety training to what their hazards are for the positions with us. This is a condition of their employment. We have, we get feedback every year, and we're able to adjust our trainings as things come up. In 2024, 96.68% of all district employees completed required training on time. The others, they still completed it, it's just late. But that's still really positive that we're still able to have 96, almost 97% of our staff complete their expected training on time.
Sorry, is the, is the late piece of it, is that folks who are out, maybe on LOA or something? Because, because if you have to, if you're a teacher.
Correct.
The work, you have to have that done, correct? So do we have teachers going late that we have to round up and say, hey, go do this? Or is everybody pretty good about that? Where's the late piece coming from?
Sure, I think the late piece comes in when we hire after August, after September. Because since we're hiring staff all year long, there's a big push at the beginning of the year.
Right.
And it's like, here's the date that it has to get done, here's the date that it has to get done. And so when we have people hired after that initial part, then what happens is they end up maybe extending by, instead of 30 days, maybe it's 35 days, or maybe it's closer to 40 days. But every week, the employee and the supervisor gets emails on who in their building or who under their supervisory, you know, needs to complete it. And so it lets them know how to access the training and how to do it. So, yeah, that's usually where we find that most of the discrepancies come from. When an employee is injured, we have a telemed that we work with. There, our staff is able to access that 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And some of the calls turn into claims, they need to seek treatment. And so we want to know who pays for these claims, what happens when somebody gets hurt. And the district collects premiums from employees, it's on all of our check stubs, and we manage program premiums and expenditures to ensure that our program has adequate cash reserves to fund expected and outstanding claims. We also pay quarterly payments to Labor and Industries for statewide program administration. And other costs may include our third-party claims administration service. They may also pay for other safety program-related costs for like equipment or supplies, training, and for the doctor visits, physical therapy, maybe we need to rent some equipment for them, and for any lost time, which is a disability pay through Labor and Industries. That's about 66 and 2/3% of their check. For our total claims filed, a best practice indicator is that 3% or less of our workforce will file a claim each year. And looking at these claims, it really is an indicator of frequency, and we want to reduce that frequency. This is an overview of the past several years where we sit with that 3% goal, and it's favorable for most often than not. This is a familiar slide, and I added a little bit more data to this because we want to know who's injured. It's not just that claims are being filed, we want to know who it is because we really want to find out if we need to focus our attention, focus our safety efforts on reducing that. I've highlighted, unfortunately, the higher numbers. And while this year we didn't have any high numbers, it really is indicative when you're looking at the percentages here where we can focus on reducing some of the claims. Ms. Gladhill, I know that you had a question on this slide on staff that were injured due to student behaviors. And out of, out of the 63 claims that we're talking about today, 20 of them are from student behaviors. We have one nurse, seven teachers, and 12 parent educators.
So that was of all of the numbers that are here on the graph, or that was just for 2024?
This is just for the 63 claims that I'm talking about for 2024. That's the 20 claims that I'm talking about.
Okay.
Sorry, and the percentage that's in the block, is that the percentage relative to the number of injuries compared to the number of staff in that?
Correct.
Category?
Correct, so we're talking about 4% of parent educators overall that were injured, less than 1% of the teachers, administrators, and secretary. And then once the claim has been filed, we want to talk about the severity. And that severity is reflected in our time loss and medical only. We want people to be at work. We don't want them to be injured severely enough that they're not able to be here and be in their contracted jobs. It's better for the classrooms when they're here, it's better for the kids when they're here. So we really want to reduce that. You'll see this year, even though we have a reduced number of claims filed, we have a greater number of time loss claims. Part of that has come through the way that Labor and Industries views municipalities and public schools. We have, it's called good faith and fair dealing. And so there's reduced opportunities to offer light duty right off the bat. That's what's contributed to having more claims this year. We work closely with nurse case managers and vocational counselors, and we work at having a good relationship with our doctors, so they know we have light duty available, so they don't have to wait for us to ask. So we're really trying to be proactive. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about our program.
Any?
Yeah.
Sure.
So Molly, about a third, back up like two slides ago, the staff injury data, that's about a third, right? About a third of the roughly rough math. I assume that that's probably relatively accurate all the way through. But that's more injured by students, but not all these people even interact with students, right? So I don't know.
I just did it. So I took out MNO and food service. So that took it down to 49. So it's 20 out of 49 cases that have direct contact with students. So it's a little higher than a third.
Forty something percent. Anyway, so that seems high to me. I mean, it seems really high, actually. That high, I mean, is there something we can do about that? Is there something that would be thought about that? Because that seems to way too many. I don't think our teachers should be getting hurt by students at all.
I know it's a challenge. When I work with our TPA, they handle several other districts on the west side, and they talk about, it's, it's really an issue for all school districts. And I would be interested, though, I can, I'd be happy to talk with them about what the numbers look like.
That's what I was just going to say, I'm not sure, and that's great, Molly, and maybe we can get some comparison data to see if, you know, we're an outlier, or if this is pretty consistent with what happens in school districts, just based on the nature of what we do and some of the students that, that we serve. And then I think in terms of preventative, in addition to this kind of training, there's CPI training for teachers and parent educators and staff members to understand like how to best, if you, if you need to intervene and restrain or a student, how to do it safely and those kinds of things. So there's other types of training that don't really fall into, into Molly's presentation that we also do.
Yeah, I know the discipline doesn't really fall into your presentation, but that, you know, I think about that. Are we disciplining the right way? Are we disciplining enough? I mean, we shouldn't have that kind of thing. So, um, yeah, any additional information would be great.
Okay, I'll see what I can find. Yeah, thanks.
While you're doing that, the setting in which those occur would be nice, whether that's in a high school setting, elementary school, special education, those kinds of things. And just helping us see if there's areas we can be provide some resources that would make it safer for educators.
Okay, I'd be happy to do that.
Of the 13 that turned into time loss, are those all within that 20?
No.
That were, okay, so they're not all from, from that?
No.
Any other questions for Molly? All right.
All right.
Thank you, Molly.
Thank you.
Thanks, Molly.
Thank you.
On the 20 cases where the students were. Where they suspended, where they sent home today, where they suspended. I'd just be curious.
Okay, I don't see why you'd go ahead to that.
All right. Moving along to unfinished business. We have policy number 2313 Instruction Electronic Information System. And Alyssa will be walking us through that. And we went through this once last, last time, right?
Yeah, if the board recalls in November, in part of some of our work with AI guidance, we've been reviewing some of our policies and procedures. And in November, the board recommended and approved a policy for digital citizenship media literacy. I also shared this one with some updates, 2313 Electronic Information Systems with some additions for resources and internet safety. At that time, the board wanted to see a little bit of the procedure work that was going on, especially around some staff supervision with internet. So I have, I have that as well. I'm, I just am looking to the board if we want to look at this policy right now or.
I think so. I think we just turned it over to Brittany.
No, great.
Yeah.
Turn it over to Brittany.
Fantastic. Okay, so we're just looking at the policy, not the procedure right now, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so I, on the I don't, do you want me to be nitpicky about?
Sure, why not?
It's up to the board.
The first sentence, the board believes, that, actually, the second sentence. Therefore, the district utilizes electronic communication systems. I don't think we need the word communication because it's, they're not strictly communication systems. Okay. That was, that's one that was changed. The next paragraph down, the board intends only to provide a means for educational activities and does not intend to create a First Amendment forum for free expression purposes. I like that, but I think I'd love to have something included in there along the lines of entertainment as well, because I don't, the misuse that I hear of and that I see from our electronic, our electronic systems are not expressly about free expression. A lot of the misuse is entertainment.
Most of it.
All of it.
So First Amendment forum.
Almost all of it.
And?
I don't, I don't know exactly how you want to phrase it, but I, I just want to make sure that's captured in there because if someone really wanted to find a loophole, right? Watching YouTube isn't free expression or First Amendment.
There are a couple things in the procedure about that, but Dr. Pierce?
No, I just want to, because the first sentence says only to provide, uh, I can't read that next. Something for, sorry, thank you, thank you, a means for educational activities. If maybe there's, there's where we would emphasize.
Coverage there.
Or you could just add, does not intend to create a First Amendment forum for free expression or purely entertainment purposes.
Yeah.
Yeah, because, yeah, because the board only intends, intends only to provide education, a means for educational activities.
Purely or solely, solely entertainment purposes. Entertainment can be part of it, but it's not solely.
So they're not just playing games on their.
Yeah, we're not giving Chromebooks so that they can all get on Minecraft.
Or a trail.
I mean, honestly, I would say, I don't think, I don't think it's our intent, the board's intent, the district's intent to provide these at all for any entertainment purposes. I was just pointing out, so I apologize if I'm not being clear, but the first sentence says that the only intent is for educational activities.
You're saying that's where it's.
I know, but.
Yeah, but, and so maybe educational activities maybe versus entertainment and does not intend to create a First Amendment forum.
Sure.
Maybe that's.
That'd be a great.
The place to put it.
Sure.
Just a suggestion.
Yeah.
One more time, Dr. Pierce, provide a means for educational activities.
It's just enough of a problem that
Yeah.
I feel really strongly about having, calling specifically out that it's not for entertainment purposes.
And I agree.
So keep like.
I like, I like Dr. Pierce's suggestion to say that it's, the board intends only to provide a means for educational activities. Did you say rather than entertainment versus?
Yeah, rather than entertainment. This isn't, does not intend to create.
Yeah.
A pressure there type. You don't want to mess up.
Tell me about it. Does that capture what the board would like?
I think either one I'm happy with.
Okay, on the, my next page, I don't, the, it's the send, it's the paragraph right before the bolded section, right there. We passed it already, I think. For directs, no. I'm trying to research this, hold on, I don't know where we are. Okay, keep going. Okay, right, so this first full paragraph that's read and underlined, the board directs a superintendent. I think there's an opportunity here to put something in about frequency or how often we're doing the training, or does that fit into the procedure? That's a procedure, okay.
Yeah, and we are, I can show you where it's at when we pull the procedure up.
Okay, perfect. And then the next paragraph that talks about the handbooks, the, the last sentence, the district will electronically supervise the use of such property and provide guidance via district procedures and student and parent handbooks and guidelines. Do we have a staff handbook for how? Okay, that's already created, we already have it in place.
So part of the procedure that we'll see is we're going to be updating our computer use agreement to a acceptable use policy that the staff will sign off at the beginning of the school year.
Okay. Is there an argument or a need to put the staff handbooks in here that the district will also be providing staff handbooks and guidelines as well?
Like right here, student, staff.
Yeah, student, staff, and parent handbooks and guidelines.
Yeah.
Just so that we can refer back to it.
Yeah.
It's our policy that we're going to give you a handbook, so everyone should let anyone be surprised by it, that it's in there and written down. Okay, hold on. Have to try to read my handwriting, hold on. Okay, the very last paragraph. Trying to remember my thoughts, we're here. I'll tell you what I wrote, and you can try to interpret it.
Okay.
Okay.
Ready.
I crossed off for educational purposes. Right there, further, when students are in school facilities for educational services, I may have underlined it. And then my comment was, I get that this is reinforcing that it should only be education, but as written, it sounds like it only applies when it's being used for education and not entertainment. Does that make sense? So further, when students use internet from school facilities for education purposes. Yes, yeah, so it makes it sound like if the student is sitting there and using their Chromebook for entertainment purposes, then the staff doesn't have to make an effort to supervise the student. I know that's not what we're saying, but.
Yeah, I like it.
Yeah. Okay. That's it, that's all I had.
Good job, Brittany.
Yeah, nice, nice work. Anybody else have any questions about the policy? If not, I will, I will take a motion.
Do you want to do the procedure first?
Oh, do you, do you do them separate?
I think you do them together, right?
This is the policy.
We don't approve the procedure.
We don't approve the procedure.
You do, they're administrative procedures, so, but we provided you with the procedure so you could see what the procedure says.
Lots of comments.
I actually had a lot more to say on the procedure. Okay.
I mean, we'll certainly, you can, we can, I would recommend you do what you're going to do with the policy.
Okay.
And then we can go to the procedure, and you can provide any feedback
Okay.
that you want.
Fantastic, you're great.
You just don't have to vote and approve the procedure.
Great.
So I will take a motion to approve Policy 2313.
Yeah, I move that we approve Policy 2313 Instruction Electronic Information Systems, Electronic Resources, Internet Safety for first and second reading.
Great. We have a motion, so Patty, I will call for the roll call vote, please.
Are we requesting an advisory vote?
Yeah. Yep, still.
Okay, Annie Malton?
Yes.
Mr. Connors?
Yes.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Gladhill?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
And Mr. Galbert?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, Policy Number 2313 Electronic Information System, the motion passes 5-0. And we were going to pull the procedure.
We can.
Do you want to provide that and work with Alyssa?
A little guidance, too, the one with track changes has a lot of track changes. Do you want to look at that one, or do you want to look at the clean copy?
I'd recommend you show the clean copy.
Yeah.
I was hoping you would say that. Yeah.
I did have a couple of questions about the track changes. Hey.
No, not award you, it's 12 pages, it's really long.
I know, and I read every word a few times and highlighted and took note.
Do you want the other copy?
No, I, oh, there were, there were a few things that I just wanted to make sure, there are a few things on the, that were, that was stricken from the procedure that I just, I wasn't clear whether or not they were still included, so.
We, we struck a lot of the old one, that there were a couple items we did just move to other sections. So we can pull that one up.
I'm, I just want to put it out there, I'm also okay with, I'm perfectly comfortable with Brittany sitting down with you.
Yeah, and if that's the best way to handle it, we can do that.
I don't know if it, but if the rest of the board is, but I'm probably comfortable with that.
Yeah, it's not something we vote on, so it's not like, even if we made the changes today.
Okay, I'll reach out. Okay, perfect.
Because it's not like we're going to vote on it.
Yeah.
Cool. Taking that one offline then.
Okay, thanks, everyone.
Thanks, Alyssa.
Thank you.
All right, moving forward, we will go for, into new business. Dr. Bruehart will catch us up on Resolution Number Six, authorizing the application to the state's guarantee program, and Resolution Number Seven, authorizing the sale issuance of the 2025 refunding bonds. Dr. Bruehart.
All right, Mr. President, Dr. Pierce, members of the board, it's an honor to be here tonight to go ahead and just kind of refresh memories from our November work session related to the refi of our 2015 bonds that are, that have a call date come this June. So just, just a recount, of course, these are, these were issued in 2015 at about an $89 million bond. And I did some research on exactly what were these bonds used for. so I thought that might be healthy for a conversation at a historical standpoint. So this included construction of Safes Crest Elementary in 2016, Desert Hills Middle School in 2016, Shinnott Middle School in 2017, Westgate Elementary in 2018. And a portion of the bond also paid for about twenty percent of Amen Creek and also in the following year as well. So as with any bond, just very similar to if you were refinancing your mortgage at your house, the main question of why are we doing this is, of course, to capture lower interest rates versus when the bond was sold back in 2015. And as any municipal bonds, there is a very lengthy process with that. And that's obviously why we have the resolutions on the table for approval tonight to kind of get us past first base and as we continue to round the bases to home. So with that being said, I do have two gentlemen tonight that, again, you met in November. Lee Marcheseo with Foster Garvey, he is our bond counsel. But before Lee kind of kicks us off and answers any questions with the finite details of the resolutions, we're going to let Scott Bauer with Northwest Municipal Advisors, who's our municipal advisor, take the lead on his presentation. And that way, again, we can be clear on everything in the process and answering any questions the board may have before we take a vote tonight. So Scott, Lee. I'll drive if you want to stand up there. That's fine.
Yeah, all right. Well, good evening, members of the board. Yeah, Scott Bauer, Northwest Municipal Advisors. Nice to see you all again. So, yes, here today to talk about the two resolutions as part of the refinancing, school bond guarantee resolution we mentioned last time for a hundred dollar application fee. You'll get the state's bond rating, which is an excellent AA1, which is just a notch below. So again, really a great program the state puts on. So that's the one resolution on the left, and then the bond resolution, which would authorize the actual issuance of the 2025 bonds. Of course, we have the excellent author of both resolutions, so I won't go into those now. But if you have any questions, he is here to answer those. So just real quick, we showed these graphs last time. Now they're just updated for the past couple of months since we were last here. So the market has gone up a little bit since we were last here. And really, as, you know, market participants looking into the new year, a lot of eyes are still on what's happening with inflation because that's the terrible word for fixed income, which is what bonds are. So as inflation goes up, rates go up. But luckily, at least through last year, inflation has come under a little more control. But I guess the next thing is what's happening with tax policy. So once again, there's rumblings of potentially taking away tax exemption on bonds. So that, if that were to ever happen, that would lead to just higher bond issuance interest rates. And, you know, a refinancing like this may or may not pencil out with higher rates. But again, lots can change between now and when we actually sell the bonds, which is scheduled in March. And we'll look at a little bit of the savings. Savings aren't much different than what I showed to you last time, but they are down a touch again because rates are slightly higher. So just a quick look at the outstanding debt of the district. So the lines above are the district's outstanding bonds. The blue line and the blue bars down below are the bonds that we're looking to refinance here. So thirty-seven million outstanding, final maturity of 2034. So again, when we refinance these bonds, we're not looking to extend the final maturity. So a little different than sometimes folks do with a home mortgage. They might extend it to lower the payments, but we're not extending the final maturity. It'll still have a 2034 final payment. And as was mentioned, call date on this, when the bonds were originally issued, we couldn't do anything. We couldn't refinance them until we approached this call date. And now here we are, ten years later, and ready to do so. So this is a savings page. So again, summary of the outstanding 2015 bonds on top. So again, thirty-seven million outstanding. They have an average interest rate of 4.99%. So that's a weighted average because most of the maturities actually have five percent coupons on them. One of them has a four percent, but when we look at them all combined, it's about a 4.99%. So we're looking to replace that with at least current market rates at around 3.56%. You see that there? With, at those rates, then looking to save, you see the column on the far right up above. So that's the annual savings we're looking to achieve, which summed to a $3.6 million. If we could take all of those cash flow savings that you get over a period of ten years and put those in our pocket today, that's what we report out as the net present value savings. So that's just shy of the $3 million. $3 million compared to the principal amount we're refunding is about eight percent. So that just gives us a sense of how powerful is this refunding. And so eight percent is a, is a good refunding number. And again, the graph on the, on the right just shows you, the line is the 2015 bond principal and interest payments, and then what they would be replaced with on the 2025 bonds. The difference between the two lines then would be the savings again that you see up above. So just, we'll highlight a couple of dates then coming up. So again, we're here today for the board meeting. If the bond resolution and school bond guarantee resolution pass, then the district will apply to the state for that guarantee program. Getting into February, then, we'll have a call with Moody's Ratings in order to get a rating on the bonds. Once we get those ratings back in early March, then the official statement, which is the draft, which just came out yesterday, that'll be distributed to investors. We look to sell the bonds then on the March 18th. So that'll be the date that interest rates are actually locked in, the bond purchase agreement will be signed. And then we'll march toward closing the bonds on April 3rd. So then funds will be available. Since this is a refunding, money doesn't really come to the district. It'll go to an escrow agent to hold until the call date, which is June 1st. And then the escrow agent will pay off bondholders on that date. But come April 3rd, basically, those bonds would be off your books, and the new 2025 bonds would be on. With that, I'll pause for any questions?
So all in over the course of ten years, we're looking at a $3.00 savings for taxpayers, essentially, is that?
That's correct. That's right. Yeah, and based on current interest rates. And that number will fluctuate between now and come the time we get there, but that's right.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions?
No, I just.
I think for all of us, we really appreciate the work that's been done in putting this together. Again, $3.6 million savings over the next ten years is great. I mean, very helpful.
Well, if there's no other questions, then I'll take a motion to approve Resolution Number Six. And then, can, since it's a financial thing, can we, okay, let's do it normal.
Okay.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve Resolution Number Six, 2024 to 2025, authorizing the application to the state's guarantee program as written for both first and second reading.
All right, Patty, we will call for the roll call vote, please.
Mr. Connors?
Yes.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Gladhill?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
And Mr. Galbraith?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Resolution Six passes five-zero. I will now entertain a motion for Resolution Seven.
Resolution, I'd like to make a motion to pass Resolution Number Seven, 2024 to 2025, authorizing the sale and issuance of the 2025 refunding bonds as written for both first and second reading.
So we have a motion. Patty will call for the roll call vote, please.
Mr. Connors?
Yes.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Gladhill?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
And Mr. Galbraith?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. The motion for Resolution Seven passes five-zero. Thank you, gentlemen, for your time at both meetings. We appreciate it.
Thanks for the recap.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
All right. Well, we were just tearing through this tonight. So next meeting agenda is capital budget update and special education. Is there any other items? If not, if something does come up, please let me know, and we'll work to get that on the agenda. So now we will move into executive session for the next forty-five minutes. Thank you.